Okay, the next item on the agenda is to discuss the zoning code update. This is a follow-up from the May 23, 2022 joint meeting. David?
Good evening. As you recall, on May 23, we had a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission to talk about our zoning code update. We talked about a lot of topics that night, and there were several where we were taking notes. We were getting questions from either the Commission or the Council, and so we wanted to follow up on a few of those items to make sure we're continuing to move in the right direction and the Council's comfortable in the direction we're moving. Rita and Beth with Hoistington Cogler put together a memo that was attached to the packet that covered a number of the items, and there were a couple of attachments to that. So I'm just going to work my way through that memo. I'm going to start with some transportation-related items, and this is work that Molly along with Foth has assisted us with. The first item relates to uncontrolled pedestrian crossings, and on page seven of the document... I'll give Cindy a second to get there. Yes. Molly has put together a memo there that provides some background, and in particular, this relates to those crossings, our pedestrian crossings on streets sort of mid-block. And there was discussion at the joint meeting, and we had the table displayed that's on page nine, I believe, or actually it's page 11. Sorry. Just scroll down, just a touch there, Cindy. There's this infamous table, and so we wanted to swing back to this. And so ahead of, just before this in the memo, what we've done is actually included the text that we would include in the language, and so there was a lot of discussion about this particular table. What we've tried to do with Molly's memo and the language that's actually going to be adopted in the code is put it into some context. So we're not proposing to adopt this table per se as part of the zoning code. What we're suggesting is there are places where we'll want mid-block crossings, and when we do, what we've tried to do is outline how they should occur and under what conditions they should occur. And that's, that's the language that starts on page seven. It's listed as Attachment One, and you know, we talk about spacings from driveways, spacings from intersections, the number of different things. And then we reference in there the FHWA Guide for Improving Safety and Controlled Pedestrian Crossings, which as part of that 40-page document is that table that was, was just displayed there. So we're not adopting that table per se. It's a part of a tool that we would use. And I do want to point out and clarify, part of, part of the challenge I think we have as we work through the zoning code update is, is we talk a lot about a number of topics, and when we apply the zoning code, it'll be for new developments and redevelopment projects. You know, it wouldn't necessarily change how we would design a roadway, an existing roadway, for example. Now, obviously, if we're going to adopt a standard in zoning code, it's probably a standard we'll use for other things as well. But it isn't necessarily, that isn't necessarily meaning by adopting or referring to this guidance in the zoning code that we're going to go out and start making changes to every existing intersection based on, based on that guidance. So I just wanted to clarify that. We did include some additional language that you didn't have at the May 23 meeting, and Molly tried to summarize that memo as well. So I'm going to pause there. Happy to go into further detail if there are questions related specifically to that table, to that chapter. If not, I'm going to keep moving. There was a question related to street trees, and so included on page two of the memo is the actual text that's proposed related specifically to where street trees would be required. And again, we have to distinguish here about this requirement would be for new developments or redevelopment projects. And this language is what's been vetted through. We had a committee, a subcommittee of Tree Board members, Planning and Zoning Commission members, and a couple of council members that worked on this over the, over the winter months, and the Planning and Zoning Commission's seen this. The suggestion is that street trees would be required along any street designated in the comp plan, and I've included a couple of maps for reference. Any street that's designated in the comp plan is arterial or collector, and street trees would be required on a, every 50 feet along those streets. What we tried to do is distinguish, and there are, for reference, and included in the attachment are a number of street profiles sort of showing, you know, how wide streets are and where street trees might live within those segments and sort of some of the conflicts that we have. So what we tried to distinguish is if we're going into a new subdivision, we're building a new collector street, we're establishing right-of-way, we're doing all those things, it's much easier to sort of establish the right-of-way and the right utility configurations to accommodate street trees. If we're putting in a new development adjacent to Merle Hay Road, it's much more difficult. We already have sort of established some of those things. And so what the ordinance as proposed allows is that if it can fit within the right-of-way, that's where they would be, the street trees would be required. If they can't, they would need to be located within 15 feet of that right-of-way, so still in the front yard, just behind the sidewalk instead of the, instead of in front of the sidewalk. And these trees would be in addition to any open space trees that were required on the site. So we're not talking about, oh, they're just going to move the trees they're already planting to this area, they're going to have to have additional trees planted. So it is an increase from what we currently require.
So Dave, what does it mean to fit within the right-of-way? Because I think that we want to avoid some of the problems that we have throughout our community now with, you know, the roots bumping up the sidewalks.
Right. So we have, we already have established, and we're not proposing to change that, it doesn't actually fall under zoning. We already have established setbacks from water mains, sewer mains, sidewalks, curbs, those types of things. What we did do, and what we are proposing, and we've got the language included there on page two, is we are proposing some changes to our sort of standard right-of-way expectations for streets. Right now, we sort of have a range 60 to 80 feet or 100 feet or more, and so it's not super prescriptive, and everyone comes in and assumes, well, it's a lower number. And so we've tried to be a little bit more prescriptive there, calling out specifically minor collector residential needing a 70-foot right-of-way, a minor collector commercial needing an 80-foot right-of-way. Typically today, we're only getting 60, maybe 70 feet in both of those. So we're asking for a little bit more right-of-way there, and that will help give us more room to plan for, you know, all the things that have to live within the right-of-way and the spacing that they would need. So that's, that's the current, excuse me, that's the current status of where we are, or what we're proposing as far as street trees. As I mentioned, there are cross-sections attached, and happy to talk about any of those. The one thing that we will, will need to do, or what we will ask of the Tree Board is for them to establish and propose to you a acceptable street tree list. And so I think there's some guidance out there now, but what we would intend, not with the zoning code, but probably a separate resolution, is we would adopt a list. So anyone wanting to plant a street tree would have to pick a tree that's off of that list. So we're picking species that are, you know, party to the conditions that we're going to be exposing them to.
And would you maybe also encourage some diversity as well, so to get plant?
Yeah, that's, yeah, there's a whole separate in the zoning, or in the landscape chapter, then that would apply here. There's a requirement for, pretty significant requirement for diversity species, subspecies, yep.
I have a question, and it has to do with the minor collector residential, the 70-foot right-of-way, and you're showing what looks to be shade trees outside the sidewalk, and there's nothing between the back of curb and the public sidewalk. Does that mean that they're not allowed to have trees in there, or you're just not requiring trees in there?
Well, that's, yeah, so that would, there, these are showing, this particular, that particular cross-section, sorry Cindy, I don't know what page it's on.
It's on 16.
Is just showing where they would be located if they're within that 15 feet. So those trees, so we just provided some examples of where they could live. The next one, actually, the commercial one shows both an understory and an overstory in the right-of-way.
Yeah, this was the only...
Showing examples.
Okay.
Yep, just showing where they would have to, have to be in. And the shading on all of those kind of gives you an idea of the root structure.
I get that. Well, this is helpful.
I do like the, the idea of sort of saying, recognizing.
You know, a street tree includes something that's, could be on the other side of the sidewalk, because I think that, you know, certainly you, you run into challenges with infrastructure, and the tree might, it may be inside the sidewalk to start with, but then, but may not have been planted properly or whatever. And so I think expanding that concept and maybe promoting the concept of inside or outside the sidewalk is good for the tree, it's good for the sidewalk, it's good for the public utilities, I think it's a good balance approach.
Other questions on street trees? I'll keep moving, otherwise. Next topic area was accessory dwelling units. There was a good comment or sort of clarification that came out of the discussion at the May 23 meeting in that there are two types of accessory dwelling units, those that are part of the primary structure and those that are in a detached structure. And our code requirements were a little unclear on what applied to what, and so what's included in the, in the memo that starts on page two and goes over to page three is a reworking of those, not necessarily that we've, we've changed the requirements, but what we've done is, particularly under number seven, clearly identified those requirements that would fall for accessory dwelling in its center in a detached structure. And essentially, we're considering them accessories, so they'd have to follow the size guidelines of the accessory dwelling, or accessory structure chapter, the setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. And so we just try to make that a little bit more clear, what the requirements are if it's attached to a primary structure or if it's in a standalone detached structure. Otherwise, pretty much the same requirements that we talked about on the 23rd. Any questions on accessory dwelling units?
I do have a question there, Dave, about number six, where it talks about off-street parking spaces must be available for you, or used by, with at least two spaces available for the principal residence and one space available for the accessory dwelling. So how do you, do you count spaces in a driveway? How does that work?
Yeah, we would look at driveway spaces. We also have, under our, I don't, I don't know where it falls in the new code, under our parking provisions, we don't, so we don't give full credit for garage spaces, because people tend to also store stuff in there. And so if you have a two-car garage, you can get credit for parking, the ability to park one vehicle typically.
In the driveway?
In the, in the garage itself. So if, in this case, we're saying you'd need at least three spaces, one of which, if you have a two-car garage, one of which could be in a garage, and two of which would have to be in a driveway.
Okay, so the garage, it, you know, it's inside the garage counts, but also the driveways?
Okay.
Is, David, is that then a 50% of what I'd call stalls in a garage? What about double-deep garages or three-car? Would they always just get 50% credit?
That's how we've traditionally handled it. We've tried to carry that forward in the new code as well.
Right.
Even on an ideal world, if you have a three-car garage, you can park three vehicles in it. Most of us struggle with that. We all have stuff we store, and so...
If you are parking three cars on a three-car garage, you don't have...
So we just try to, we try to recognize that, and that, yeah, you know, the people are using their garage spaces for things other than parking, and so we need to make sure there's still parking available. All right, next topic was accessory structures, and there was discussion at the, at the meeting about some suggested changes that staff had proposed, and then there was a question about sort of what other communities are doing. And so on the bottom of page three, we did do a summary of some of the other communities in the metro, kind of all over the board. Number of cities do have a smaller maximum size around Des Moines, 576 square feet. Ankeny and West Des Moines are about 1,000 square feet. Grimes and Urbandale just took to a percentage of a backyard. What we're suggesting, and based on the feedback we got both from the Commission and the Council, as shown on page four, we had suggested reducing the sizes of those accessory structures that were permitted. We've, based on the feedback, we're, we're backing away from that. We are still suggesting that we reduce the number of categories from eight down to five based on the lot size. It just, I'm not sure, we need to distinguish between lots that are two and three acres and three and five acres, and so we've tried to condense those. But if you look under the proposed table there, the square footages that are allowed match those under our existing table. So we're staying consistent with what would be permitted from a size perspective. We have changed how we would calculate the height, calculating the sidewall height. Our current calculation's a little bit trickier. We measure half the distance between the eve and the peak, which gets challenging if you're building on a hill and one side's higher than the other. And so what we're suggesting is we would just simply measure the sidewall height, gives a little bit more flexibility in, in peak design or slope of the roof, and still, you know, carries on to make sure we're not getting super tall accessory structures. So with that, I'll stop there and answer any questions you might have, or any concerns. All right, I think I've only got two more topics for you. And the next one's really simple. There was some discussion about what we called private recreation areas and multifamily, and there was concern about some of those areas wouldn't be recreation, so just letting you know, we've changed those to private outdoor amenity spaces. So if there's any concern about that, let me know. And the last topic is interstate and highway-oriented signage. We did have a good discussion about the signage that we allow that are oriented to the interstate along, particularly along Merle Hay Road in our C3 district. We did do some research and have the table there on page five of what other cities allow. We also did some research on what's considered readable from certain distances and speeds. And based on that, our current requirement on interstate-oriented signs is at a maximum area of 100 square feet. We are suggesting to bump that up slightly to 150 square feet to allow a little bit more readable signage. And that is consistent and still pretty conservative based on what a number of the other cities are, are currently doing. That's the only change we're currently proposing under interstate-oriented signs. We are suggesting a new category specific to Highway 141 related to highway-oriented ground signs, and these would be, unlike interstate signs, any property within 1,000 feet of the interstate right-of-way can, can have an interstate-oriented sign. You know, when we get to Highway 141, we're at a slightly slower speed. Ultimately, that'll be a, through, where it goes through Johnson will be a 55 mile an hour speed limit, but we still have, you know, a pretty heavily traveled, still a higher-speed corridor, and so it makes sense that there would be some signage oriented to that, to that traffic. And so we're suggesting those would be called highway-oriented signs, and they would be limited to 100 square feet in area. And again, we use that based on the slower speed versus the interstate speed, and that they would be not to exceed the greater height of 15 feet above the grade of Highway 141. So for a property that's below grade, you would be able to get that sign elevated 15 feet above the grade of the highway, or a maximum height of 30 feet, whichever is greater. And those would only be eligible for properties that are immediately adjacent to the 141 right-of-way. So we're not giving that, you know, the property one removed from the highway would not be able to have this oriented signage, it would just be those that are right on the highway. And so that language is there on page six, or what we're suggesting. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I just gave you a real quick summary of what we're suggesting there. Any questions or concerns?
Dave, would that, could someone still have a billboard of sorts, though? Would that still fit as long as it met that grade height?
Not a billboard, because we require that all signage is advertising on, is for on-premise.
Is that, is that a content restriction?
It's not a content, that's, as I understand it, through the court cases, on-premise versus on-premise is still something we can regulate.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
And we're, we're still working through the full sign chapter, so you haven't seen that yet. These are some of the areas where we're proposing some changes, and we'll, all of that'll get vetted through Christine Stone before we bring it back to you, because she's been a, there's a lot, a lot of legal cases on sign and, just a Supreme Court ruling within the last two months that altered things again. So we're, we'll make sure what we bring back to you is, is up, is up to snuff from a legal perspective. I did, I lied, I had one more topic. There was a question about steep slopes in particular, and we had mentioned, we had a provision in our subdivision ordinance that we had shared with you on the 23rd that talked about, you know, discouraging development on certain conditions, but we didn't have a specific slope requirement or steep slope requirement. And so what we're suggesting is further action would be needed and a geotechnical exploration would be needed for any property that had a slope over 14%. And that actually comes right out of our watershed assessment and stormwater management plan we did back in 2009, and on the, on page 21, 22 is actually the map right out of that study, and it's a kind of a tan color, brown color on that map that shows where those areas are, and they're generally where you'd expect them along kind of the Sailorville Drive, or excuse me, the Beaver Drive area, as they drain, some of those are being drained down to the lake, but there are some others as well. And so what we had classified in that study was, as steep was anything greater than 14%. And so we're suggesting we carry that forward in the actual language of the subdivision regulations as well.
I appreciate what you've shown here. Sometimes, though, grading permits are given prior to an approved plan. And what my concern is that they are going to get in there and start cutting down trees before they realize that they're going to have severe stability erosion issues. So I'd like to have those conversations.
Good, good clarification. We are, while it's, most of our erosion and grading requirements are not in zoning, we're doing a number of things that are affecting those chapters, and so part of what we're expecting to adopt with the new code is a redo of all of those chapters, erosion control, stormwater management, all of those chapters. And we will make sure there's a reference in that grading section back to these requirements. So we would have that same, if you're over 14%, whether you're doing a subdivision or you're just trying to do some grading under a grading permit, we'd make sure to carry that forward.
Okay, thank you.
David, is there a setback provision then from that slope?
Well, what it's basically saying is, what the language, what's, I'm sorry, I just closed my, you're on the wrong page here. And we'll, we'll work out the full language, but it would have a provision that would require a property owner developer to provide a geotechnical information about the slopes on their property. When slopes are 14% or greater, and they're proposed to be developed, a slope stability analysis would be required to demonstrate that the property is buildable and under what protective measures would be necessary. So it's, it's requiring further exploration before they do any grading to make sure what they're proposing to do would, would be suitable for the conditions of soil.
Okay.
Okay, we have one more item. And Jim, you have, thank you, thank you, Dave. And you have seven minutes to talk to us about the proposed sidewalk repair, replacement, and construction program.
Yes, I'll go ahead and just introduce this subject. As the Council's probably aware of, we have a sidewalk program that staff and particularly the Public Works Committee has been working on for a number of years. The purpose of the program is to formalize a process whereby we inspect and we have ordered sidewalks to be constructed or reconstructed or whatever would need to be done to make them safe and meet standards. Currently, our code does allow the city council to, the authority to order the repair, replacement, and reconstruction of sidewalks, as well as order construction of sidewalks. So we have that authority within the council already, and this is really putting a process in place where we can do an active inspection and, and order the repair of the sidewalks. So I know we're limited in time. I do want to thank the Public Works Committee, several different iterations of that, because we have talked about this for a number of years, but they've worked hard in helping direct staff on what this sidewalk program should look like, and that's the policy you have before you, or the program you have before you this evening. Again, what I'd like to do just real briefly, because we don't, we have a limited number of time, our plan is, was to discuss it at the work session tonight, and then we're going to bring it back for action from the city council to adopt the program. But really, what the program does, where we try to cover all the areas, for example, public education, what we can do to make sure the public's aware of the sidewalk program. But we have found out, and Matt's done an excellent job recently with the Green Meadows area, where there, we've had neighborhood-level meetings when we go into an area to talk about what sidewalks, what we're trying to accomplish with our sidewalk program, and we are suggesting that we do that as we go to the different areas. What was included in the, the packet this evening was a map that shows eight areas that identify eight different sections that would be reviewed over the years, and to, our staff would go out, or we'd hire somebody to go out and assess the sidewalks, and you can see the map, Cindy's bringing it up here. And we're, we're starting with the Green Meadows area. With the, we're working on the ramps this year, and next year, we're going to work on the sidewalks that are in between the ramps, and that really kicks off the sidewalk program and what we're intending to do. But if you go through here and take a look at the, what's being proposed, there's the, again, the inspection process after the inspections are done, and what would happen is each year, the council would direct the, the staff to go ahead and do the inspections. We would then get competitive bids for what it would cost for residents that want to have their sidewalks repaired. We would notify the property owners more than likely in the spring. We would give the property owners an opportunity for voluntary compliance, that they can fix their sidewalk, get their own contractor to fix the sidewalk, whatever method they would, they would choose. If, if residents want to use the city contractor, we have, we will have a bid price, so we can share with them what that cost would be. And then if we have residents that are, are not willing to correct their sidewalks, then we have a process where we can, we can go ahead and make the repairs with our contractor and then charge them for the cost of repairing the sidewalks. At the end of the day, again, the importance is the safety of the sidewalks and, and making sure that they're completed and safe to, for the citizens to be able to travel on the sidewalks. And then we also get into the permits and installation. There are some, if you look at page three, section four, we do have some deferral guidelines, because one of the things that we know that there are situations where we may want to consider deferring a sidewalk repair, replacement, and this gives us some guidelines to take a look at as far as what conditions we might do a deferral. The other thing I want to mention, too, there is also is a process in here where if residents aren't in agreement of the sidewalk repair, they can, they can appeal to the city administrator, and then eventually, if they're not happy with my decision, then they can come to the city council as well. So we tried to cover all the, the different areas that were important in putting a program like this together, and, and again, there's been a lot of work on this over the years. We've sort of started it and sort of held back a little bit as we've had some other priorities come up regarding sidewalks, but we feel like we're at a place now where we're ready to really kick this off next summer, after we do some of the, the repairs to the ramps in Green Meadows this year, and then get into more of the, you know, in front of the, the properties. So I know I said residents, this does include commercial, I'm just using that term sort of generally, but any type of sidewalk repair, replacement, and/or ordering of new sidewalks that aren't in place now. So I know that's a quick overview. We had the opportunity to review this prior to the, to meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Also any questions for Jim?
So Jim, the, the doc, there's a document that says sidewalk repair, replacement, and construction program updated 5/27/22. So this is an update from the, our previous sidewalk program that we adopted. It, the, it's unclear to me in reviewing this, what's changed from the previous plan? There's no red line to it or anything?
Right.
Is there a way to have a red line version of that?
We could do that, yes. I can go back to a previous version and, and, because this went, went to the current committee, and so, you know, this is the, the changes that they are, what they are recommending. So I, I certainly can do that before we, I can bring it to the, I'll do a red line draft or go back and get the red line before of the changes from the previous one that we had done, and then we...
I'm just literally looking for anything of substance. I mean, you know, minor, it's just, it's just hard for me to get a sense of any, what the extent the changes are made. And I guess the other thing I'd like to see before we consider the council is, so if you look at this map, so what's our kind of initial timetable? You know, are we intending to, for instance, the S1 area, which is Green Meadows, it sounds like that's going to be a two-year product, project of the ramps year one and then sidewalks year two. And so do we envision then going to S2 the next year, S3, S4, et cetera? Is that, is that numerically in order? And also, do we envision taking two years for each neighborhood to do ramps, and, or is that just unique to that? So I, I don't, we need, I don't even know the answer tonight, but if, when it comes back, some sort of calendar? I think without any sort of calendar, this is just, it's sort of, it's a plan, but it's not, there's no timetable for us to kind of hold ourselves accountable to. I'd like to see.
And those are very good observations. The one thing I'd say about Green Meadows, that's a very unique neighborhood because of the way those, those ramps were put in there, you know, that, that we're trying to make some improvements to improve safety there, and Matt's talked about that, you know, at several council meetings. But, so I think that's more why this one's taking two years. I think when you get into the other neighborhoods, there's probably less ramp issues and those kinds of things. And the other thing I'd, I'd like to mention is that, you know, our, we sort of set this up, and I'll let Matt answer this, I mean, to be sort of a... up, and I'll let Matt answer this, I mean, to be sort of a, an eight-year program, so we have eight sections, what I, what I can't really guarantee at this point in time, we may get into the program and decide, wait a minute, we took off more than we could, and it may take, you know, we have to readjust as we go through, but.
Certainly, no, I understand that, but we had to find kind of a middle ground. I mean, I think right now, there's just no objective scheduling attached to any of this. And, and I, and I agree that we shouldn't have, we shouldn't like contractually obligate ourselves to some sort of schedule. But at least, you know, are, having an understanding of, are we going to follow, do these numbers, do these numbers reflect two is the second, the next section we'll go to, and then we'll go to three and four? Does that mean something? And, you know, and some sort of basic schedule, here, here's where we expect to be in the next five years? That's something that I think I'd like, I'd like to see when it comes back to the council.
Yeah, we can put that together. That shouldn't, that wouldn't be an issue. Green Meadows, we took it on, we, we've had a sidewalk fund, so we, we took that money that was sitting there, and we wanted to kind of get that started, at least with the ramps, and to kind of introduce that to the neighborhood. Moving forward, we would kind of anticipate that that would be condensed down into one year and not have a ramp project every time we have a sidewalk program. So moving forward, it would just really be one-year program versus spread out like this one is, like Green Meadows is. And then, yeah, the, they are in numerical order as we would go, kind of from the oldest part of town.
True.
Kind of into the new, where we wouldn't really have many issues or would have by eight years from now. So we'll get the schedule put together and get it circulated with the red line version as well.
My intent would be to bring back the July 18 meeting, make sure we have the full council available.
Okay, first, Matt, did you have something more you wanted? Which will extend our discussion for 15 minutes.
No, it won't. I was going to say, we can get the calendar as well as the red line circulated prior to that meeting, so if anybody has any comments, or if anybody looks at this and has any comments, they can get it to us so that we can have our discussion on the 18th.
And we can put it on the non-consent agenda, too, so we have the opportunity to discuss it as well.